The West Sacramento Planning Commission, the November 18th meeting to order. As is typical, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance and tonight I'd like to call on Commissioner Ladema to lead us in the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ladema. We also start with presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. I do not have any requests to speak at this time, so we will move on to correspondence and staff communications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the first meeting of the City Council in November, Community Development presented the draft Climate Action Plan and City Council directed staff to incorporate that plan into the general plan update that is occurring. So that will be coming back to you with the general plan update and we'll also be able to entertain additional public comment through the general plan update. And then you have a piece of correspondence in front of you related to item number four, and that is a memo from David Tilly with a letter that was received after your packets went out. And that is the end of staff's communication.
Thank you. I'll move on to item C, which is disclosure of ex parte communications. Any commissioners have anything to report? I don't see any heads nodding. So that takes us on to the consideration approval of amendments from the October 7th Planning Commission meeting. Any comments or motion to approve?
Madam Chairman, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Morzini to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ladema. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I need to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Moore abstains. And that brings us on to item number two on our regular agenda, which is election of Planning Commission Secretary. This is mainly an administrative function for us and I would like to entertain a motion to nominate Charlene Hamilton to this role. Is there a motion in that?
I'll second that motion.
I'm not moving, sorry. I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Galván. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item three, which has been continued, the public hearing's been continued to a date uncertain. And finally, is there anything, any comments for us?
I think I'd like to make that motion.
Oh, okay, okay. Motion by, sorry, it's been a couple of weeks since the last meeting. Motion by Mr. Morzini to continue to a date uncertain, is there a second?
I'll sec.
Seconded by Mr. Ladema. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. We'll move to item number four, which is a public hearing regarding BP Arco Rail loading facility conditional use permit.
Madam Chair, I will be abstaining and recusing myself from this discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ladema.
All right, and David Tilly, Senior Planner, will be presenting this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair and San Diego members of the Planning Commission.
We'll just wait one moment, sorry. Thank you. Great, thank you, Mr. Tilly.
Sure. Tonight, we are here in a public hearing format regarding the existing BP Arco rail loading facility on South River Road, west side of South River Road, just south of 15th Street. This project is a one-year time extension request and this item has also been before your commission at least three times in the past, most recently in 2008. Facility is existing and no changes to the facility are proposed. We're bringing this forward tonight as this current, this most recent approval, which was granted in 2008, is due to expire at the end of this calendar year and the one-year extension would grant through 2011. At the most recent hearing on this in 2008, the commission stated that annual renewals would be required for this project beyond 2010. So here, tonight, we are here for that first proposed annual renewal of this permit. This is project, it has been in operation and they bring ethanol to this facility. It is unrelated to the tank and oil petroleum storage, it's actually that they have on the east side of South River Road. The most key policy provision related to this project is the land use policy A-10, which is included as attachment seven in your staff report. This land use policy guides the transition of land uses on South River Road and has been in our general plan for a number of years. At this stage in time, facilities on there that are non-conforming are limited to ordinary repair and maintenance. Over the years, this policy has kind of gotten a little tighter and a little tighter and at this stage, again, the uses are limited to ordinary repair and maintenance. Staff is recommending approval of the one-year extension to the commission this evening. As noted in your staff report, want to make and point out to the commission, to the audience, that the area has begun the transition, the bridge district to the north. As the commission has seen, infrastructure construction has begun. We do expect housing to begin, you know, probably within the next one to two years. And so when we bring this project back, should your commission extend it tonight, next year, we will be revisiting those issues, you know, again, as the area continues to transition and redevelop. So with that, I'd have to close my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And is the applicant with us this evening?
Yes, he is.
Does he wish to speak or yes, no? Do you know?
Yeah, I believe he does have some remarks to make.
Okay, so any, before we, before we open the public hearing, are there questions of Mr. Tilly from commissioners for background?
Yeah, I have one. David, in this letter, the cover letter indicated that you were going to address this letter from a neighbor.
Yes, I apologize for neglecting that. We did receive this letter and I believe we're able to get it into your packet beforehand. We did receive this letter from this party which lives in fairly close proximity to the BP facility and we were trying to investigate the, you know, situation that is referenced in the, in the letter regarding an odor. We did contact our code enforcement division and they had not had any other complaints of this nature on record, you know, as it pertains to this facility. And so we have not been able to verify that this situation is indeed occurring. However, if there is an odor that's emanating from the facility that is noticeable, you know, off-site, the city's performance standards would require that to be brought back into conformance so that they contain any objectionable odors that leave the site. We also did provide, you know, copy of this letter to the applicant with BP and I believe they are also here prepared to address some of the information that's been raised in this letter for your commission.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, open the public hearing. Applicant, if you would like to make any comments to us or address us or field questions, we'll open, it's open for that. We don't have any requests to speak from the public, other members of the public. Any questions of the applicant by the commission? Or would you like?
Yeah, is he going to talk? I'd like to know what he's doing.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to go ahead and respond to the concerns based on what I'm talking about.
Okay. If you could introduce yourself too, that'd be helpful, thank you.
My name is John Varela and I am the general manager for the company. Okay. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to respond to the, to concerns on this letter. Looking at the letter submitted by the resident on Alameda Boulevard, I'd like to try to address what I see the four main points in this letter. The first comment I would make is the, the letter states that the facility commenced operations approximately two years ago. I'd just point out that we have been in continuous operation since 2003 with ethanol offloading and we've been running without incident or any complaints from any area residents save this, this single one. Further on, the letter talks about noticing an objectionable odor that's noticed coming from the site. And for most of the year, the prevailing winds are coming from the north and the west, so that would put the, the residents in question, upwind of the facility for most of the time. And that's what we typically see. In terms of feeling some ill effects from ethanol fumes emanating from the site, BP has done extensive industrial hygiene studies on all of our workers. And the most recent one we did was in June of this year and this was done by putting air sampling monitors on the workers to measure any, any ambient discharges from the operation while they're doing the offload operation. In every case, there was, there was no evidence of any toxic exposure, ill effects to any of our workers that are direct contact with this material. And in kind of in closing, in response to the quality of life, the ethanol, the rail car ethanol offloading option continues to be the safest, the most efficient and lowest impact way to accomplish this task for the, for the residents of the area. So with those facts in mind, I would, I would urge the council to approve and support the continued operation of this asset.
All right, any questions?
Can I ask a good question?
For Mr. Varela, Mr. Moore?
Is the ethanol, are you taking it off and recovering the vapors?
No.
Were the vapors going in into the atmosphere?
Well, currently, there's no, there's no requirement for ethanol, for vapor recovery in ethanol offloading operations. What typically happens is the rail cars need to be vented when, when they're offloaded, so the tops are cracked open so the air will go in and displace the air. So, so the air is actually going in rather than coming out for the most part, so.
Well, I don't know about that, but, you know, that's fine. Let's assume that that could be possible and I doubt it, but, because I think it goes both ways. I was in the trucking business for a number of years. But going down on page six, it talks about your site waste management plan. When's the last time you tested the soil? Have you had any spills out there that you're aware of?
No, no spills at all.
It says that you're going to constantly test the soils and have them sampled and analyzed. When's the last time you did that?
As far as soil sampling, well, it's, the site is, the remediation of the site is actually owned by Tesoro, the previous owner.
Right.
They're running a, an ongoing remediation program, as you know, so that, that kind of falls under their, their realm.
Well, not necessarily, because you're using the site to unload jurors and I, I guess I'm kind of, I mean, you have your own, according to this, we have a site plan that you're dealing with and you're supposed to be doing that. And I was just curious when, if we've done it. And I guess it kind of goes to the letter then, and if we haven't had any spills and we haven't really put the vapors into the air, then maybe we are okay over there. I'm just asking it as a question.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we have not done any periodic soil sampling of the area in the last two years that I've been there. And I'm not, I'm not aware of specific requirements for that.
No, I'm just reading it on the form.
Yeah, I'm going to have.
It's on page six, you can read, top of page six.
Yeah, I'll have to do some investigation to see actually what the, what's that pointing to.
And my last question, because I, I still get this question asked of me throughout the town. Do we have any control on getting the empty tankers out of the town?
As in?
Instead of parking them behind Stone Boulevard, where we get 100 of them parked there at a time?
You know, once, once we release the rail cars from our site, they become property of, of the railroad.
That's too bad. Okay, it's always a question that's asked throughout the town, when can we get them out of here? Why do we have to store them here?
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but we don't have any control over that. It's, it's real difficult to even get cars in and out. They're dealing with the railroad, it's a challenge on a good day. So, once it leaves our gate, there's no telling where it goes.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Morzini?
It seems to me like when this conditional use permit was originally given, that there was something like six cars a day would be processed through there. Is that, is that about what, what happens?
Yeah, on average, we're doing six cars a day between three and four days a week, so we're averaging 17 to 20 cars a week.
Okay, because to Mr. Moore's question, driving to this meeting, there are probably 30 or 40 cars, it seemed like. Maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but probably 30 cars. So they're not dropping and picking up? They, they pick them up at their convenience?
You mean the railroad?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, they'll bring in.
They just keep pushing them south until they get enough of them that?
Yeah, yeah, and typically, what we see from the railroad, railroad likes to batch things in big batches as much as they can, so they try to bring in big lots of them and then we'll do, you know, as much as we can, six a day and then, you know, that's, they handle them how they, the best they can.
And who arranges the scheduling as to when these cars are delivered?
All of the scheduling is done through our office in La Palma, Southern California. They have a scheduling department down there that does all the buying and scheduling of the railroad.
So you, so you schedule precisely when you want these, like Thursday at 2:00 in the afternoon or?
No, it's, it's, it's a little more complicated because you get out in the open market and they like to buy big lots of things. So this is why typically we go through cycles of having a lot of cars and then none and a lot of cars and none. And basically, as far as the terminal operation, we just deal with them as they come in. The scheduling folks are dealing with them and trying to buy them the best they can and we're left with just, you know, dealing with them on a, on a day-to-day basis. We're not really telling them when they need them so much as they're telling us, in other words.
Okay, do you have any, any control of that as far as? I guess what I'm getting at is far too frequently, those cars are blocking 15th Street at rush hour, either in the morning or usually in the afternoon.
Right.
And I certainly would think that, that there would be a way that your deliveries could be scheduled conveniently that wouldn't impact all the commuters.
I would agree with that and if you can figure out a way to get the railroad to do that, I would, I would love to get on to that. The railroad does what the railroad does. I mean, and we typically are sitting around waiting for them to do a switch for us, so it's.
Well, you're not the first person to reply that way to a question regarding traffic impacts.
Yeah, it's just the way it is. We've, on occasion, pleaded and asked for them to cooperate and sometimes we do and sometimes they don't. So it's, we're just, you know, we're a victim just like everybody else as far as the railroad goes.
Okay, then my last question, do you, the letter that came from the Kazanis couple, you were talking about the prevailing winds. What direction are they from your facility?
They are directly west.
Okay.
So we typically don't see winds coming from the east going that way.
Yeah, but I would say the prevailing winds are more southerly than, than anywhere. So when you responded to Mr. Moore, you indicated that there's no vapor recovery, so it is possible that odors would, would be pushed with the wind?
It's possible, sure, sure.
However, you did indicate also there's no regulations that, that require you to capture all those discharges.
Correct.
So as far as air quality is concerned, you're meeting the yellow slono air quality standards?
Yep, we got a Title V air permit, we're compliant with all of those.
But I guess to, to their point, it is possible, you would concede that it is possible that they, they would smell odors.
It's possible on certain, certain days or certain times of the day or certain part of the operation when they're first, you know, opening the hatch or something, you may get a little, a little puff here and there. But like I said, once, once the operation starts, the air is drawn into the car and we don't typically see a lot of vapors coming off the cars.
I see, thank you.
Questions? Mr. Galván?
I just have one question. David, this is the only complaint that you've received regarding this matter.
That's the only one we've seen on this and we also checked with our code enforcement division and they had no records of any complaints over the, you know, the last since the facility's been operating in. Along the line, one of the things, while we have the applicant present, I'd like to see, has your operations maintained, you know, kind of a consistent basis since you began operating or would something have changed that may have prompted the matter that's in the letter?
No, the, the operation's been continuous. The only change that we had in the last year was that the ethanol content went up from about 6% to 10% in the last year. So we're doing a few more cars per week now than we have in the beginning, but that, that's the only significant change that we've seen since starting.
So, and follow-up to that, have you had any complaints from residents in the area to your business?
No.
No?
No, not from any neighboring businesses or residents, to my knowledge. I'm not, not heard of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Tilly, we noticed folks in the surrounding areas typical for this item?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions or I'll go ahead and close the public hearing? Thank you.
Thanks.
Public hearing's closed, I'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation and discussion, possible action.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for council regarding the delivery times and we've had several conversations about this on other applicants regarding restricting the, the railroad's times of delivering products or crossing some of our major intersections. I'm just wondering if it's possible that there, there could be a condition to this action that would restrict the, the applicant from receiving product at certain times? For example, that, a condition that they could only receive their product in non-peak hour time, peak traffic hour times and put the condition and the responsibility on the, the applicant rather than the railroad?
Well, I guess I've got a couple of responses to that. One, I'm not sure that we have information in the record right now to support adding a new condition to operations. So I'm a little leery about placing that condition on in the absence of a little more specific information. The second piece is I believe sometimes what we've done is put language in to require them to use their best efforts to schedule deliveries at certain times. As, as the spokesman indicated and as you've indicated, we realize that most businesses have relatively little control over when the railroads deliver items. So I think we could certainly put an sort of endeavor language in. Or you could ask, I suppose you could ask staff to develop, to look a little more closely at issues related to traffic. They were relying on the original environmental documents, as far as I know, from staffs, from my discussion with staff. In their opinion, there hasn't been any change in circumstances that would warrant additional environmental review, but you could ask them to take a look at that more closely.
Because I think the, the whole community would appreciate not having to wait as often as, as they do and this would be on 15th Street primarily. And if we, we can take that kind of a approach and be successful with it, then we could maybe have some success on Stone Boulevard at Jefferson in the future. But I'd like to be able to pursue that. I'm not sure how my co-commissioners feel about it, but it just seems like when, when I see those cars, it's always at inopportune time where the traffic's backed up and I'd like to be able to eliminate that if possible, or at least reduce it. Any other comments?
I think the, the comment run, like, I think every one of us would like to do that, just like I'd like to say, if you bring the tanks in, I think they should take them and get them out of town and not store them behind Stone Boulevard all the time. But I don't know that we have the right to regulate the, or we have the ability to regulate the railroad.
But maybe we could word it like, to the extent possible, that the applicant would request their deliveries at off-peak traffic hours or something like that, just, just to, to indicate that we have a concern about that. Now, maybe they're, they would be able to, to work more successfully with, with railroad if, if we were applying certain pressure to do that, because the applicant, Mr. Varela, didn't seem to have any objections to, to restricting the deliveries to non-peak hours, it's just that he didn't have any ability necessarily to, to do it on his own.
To get them on off-peak hours, yeah.
Mr. Tilly?
Yeah, if, if the commission is headed down, we do have some draft language if the commission is, is interested in pursuing the language that Commissioner Morzini raised.
Mr. Galván?
I'm a little unclear, are the cars that, and believe me, I run into that every day or quite often as well, are the cars that run across Stone, are those strictly used for the BP business or are those cars used for other things? In other words, even if we put that language in, would that necessarily resolve the issue?
Many of those trains that are crossing at Stone are headed towards the port in points west and some of them are UP and some of those are Sierra Northern. If I'm not mistaken, that point at Stone is kind of like the handoff point between, because Sierra Northern serves the port, then UP serves, you know, customers, you know, west, west of the port, so it is, it is kind of, it is tricky over there, without a doubt.
So if that's the case, that would make me, I guess, a little more reluctant to put that on BP.
But I think their destination is right at the facility just, just south of 15th Street, correct?
Yeah, well, certainly, yeah, there's different types of cars that go through there and, you know, certainly some of the box cars are likely going to other destinations. But we have, we have definitely talked about this, you know, topic many times at the, in the past about we can't control UP and nobody seems to be able to. But regardless, you know, we still, if, if it is the commission's desire to, you know, use something along the lines of the best efforts concept, we certainly can entertain that and have a draft language if you'd be interested.
Would you like to hear that from Mr. Tilly, the commission? That'd be great to share it if you have.
Applicants shall use best efforts to schedule rail deliveries during non-peak hours.
Pretty straightforward.
Non-peak traffic hours or vehicular traffic hours?
So those best efforts would really just be a request to the railroad?
It's an endeavor language that, yeah.
Yeah. And he says he's only tried to do that.
I'll, I'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing so that you can have that opportunity.
First point.
Okay, if you can come, we actually have an audience that sees us from home, if you believe that.
Okay, first point to make on, on the, on the rail cars themselves, to the untrained eye, it looks all like tank cars. A good percentage of those tank cars are not ours, they're LPG cars and they go somewhere else, so I don't know, you know, they're not all our cars. Secondly, to try to, to schedule on off-peak hours, like I said before, we don't, we don't schedule with the railroad. The railroad tells us when they're going to bring stuff in, so we don't, we don't have, I don't, I just don't see how we're going to have leverage to, to try to accomplish that, so just.
However, I guess the point would be that if we are asking you to make your best effort to do that and you pass that request on to the railroad, you've satisfied our request.
Right. That would be fair, yeah.
That's all we're asking.
We can definitely try, yeah. Okay.
It's a, it's a large, just, it's a large community issue, this, the passage and the ability to traverse Jeff, they're one of our main arteries.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing about the railroad, if, you know, it's hard to single out that crossing when it's, that issue is everywhere, so, you know.
We get the opportunity to take one item up at a time, so when they come to us.
We do have that luxury.
You know, and I guess, one, pardon me, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Morzini?
But reading the staff report, you've, you've seen how we're intensifying the, the frequency of renewing this permit and it's, it's, the decisions are going to be predicated on development and the impacts that your operation has on the development of the bridge district. So it's in your best interest to work with the, with the railroad because that could be, that triggers, you know, next year or the year after where the cars are being delivered in peak time and it's just creating a bigger impact than it is now, so. So if I were you, I would try to do my best to work with them and let the railroad understand that that conditional use permit is dependent on several criteria that are probably going to get more intense as, as we go, go along.
Well, that might be a fair angle to, to try to work with them, you know, turn it back on them, so, that's fair. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I close the reopened public hearing? All right, nothing more. Close of public hearing. I'd like to ask staff just a couple of clarifying questions. One, it sounds like you, you've presented us with language. I know that this doesn't expire till the end of December, and I know we, we currently have two meetings scheduled in December. I don't know if counsel or if staff needs more time to, to mull this over and how it might affect other things, and you might suggest that to us that we consider continuing and then add the language, or if you, you think that we have enough direction and we're able to take, to add in this one, one new condition, and there's no other concerns or issues, and you'd suggest that we take it up tonight? It would be helpful.
Yeah, we would feel comfortable with you, your commission taking an action this evening.
Okay.
And with that draft language, we would, we would also define those non-peak hours as being from seven to nine AM and four to six PM.
Okay.
Excuse me, excuse me, the peak hours.
Those are the peak, yeah, got it. So there, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion that if someone wants to add that language in, they're welcome to do so, and then we can take up the item.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Mr. Moore?
It's only a comment, David, and I think you need to, you know, in this project, and it'll probably be more prevalent next time it comes back, you know, they have their plan for their hazardous material operations cleared through the fire department, don't you think we should at least pass this on to the fire department's hazardous material operation and let them know that there was a complaint? Whether or not it was warranted or not, I mean, that's part of the plan they've developed, and somebody here should be aware of it.
Yeah, we will certainly relay that to the fire marshal.
You and me, you know. With that, I'll let Mr. Morzini continue.
Actually, if we're done talking, I will move the recommended action with the addition of one condition that would stipulate that the, the applicant would, to the extent possible, try to schedule the, the deliveries in non-vehicular traffic peak hours, using the language that Mr. Tilly has recommended.
There's a motion by Mr. Morzini on this item. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Galvan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That brings us to informal discussion, and Mr. Ledesma's rejoining us after having recused himself from this item.
Madam Chairman, I, I have a question of Charlene Hamilton. You, you were talking earlier about the city council action, and you mentioned the, the general plan. Do you, could you give us maybe a little update on how that's progressing, and what, when we should be able to see that coming back for, for us to, to review and the council to, to approve?
Sure. Currently, we are beginning the environmental impact report. We have finished up drafting most of the policies, which are an important element for us to be able to begin the environmental analysis. There are still two policies we need to take up the council to get some direction on, and that being the traffic level of service policy and the annexation policy. Those two policies, we plan on taking to council in January. That'll probably be their second meeting in January, since the first is likely canceled due to the holiday closure. And then, once we have that, work on the traffic impact analysis will begin, additional work related to environmental review with regard to any annexation potential. And our latest schedule shows the draft EIR going public probably late summer, early fall of 2011, and thereby making its way to planning commission in fall, and towards the end of the year of 2011.
So possibly wrap it up next year, then?
That is, that is the tentative schedule. That is the goal.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Charlene.
And I apologize, Charlene. The last item we just took up, if someone wanted to appeal, is that, is this action appealable?
Yes.
Okay.
So any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission on the matter of item number four to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within fifteen days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much, and I apologize, I'm a little rusty, because we haven't had a meeting for a few weeks. And with the mention of city council, actually, I'd like to take a moment and congratulate one of our fellow commissioners, Mr. Ledesma, on his election to city council. Thank you very much for your service, Mr. Ledesma, over the years, over a decade, and also your service as chair of the commission on a number, frankly, was it a number of years that we re-elected you to that position. So we wish you well, and want to thank you for your service and congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for, for that note, and I'll just say real briefly that thanks to all my fellow commissioners, it's been a pleasure or a privilege serving on this commission with you. I'm very, very proud of the work we've all done collectively over the last year, and for the last ten years, all the commissioners I've served with, the two gentlemen that I've served with the entire time, Charlie and Ron, I really want to thank you two for being there with me and showing me the ropes on some occasions. And I always remember, and I brought this up before in public, I always remember my first lesson, my first meeting back in 2001, was over at the old city hall, we had over, actually, it was over on Harbor, off Halyard. We had our meetings there for a while, and it was on the South Port Town Center, we had a workshop on that. And, but I remember Mr. Moore pulled me aside after the meeting and said, no matter what we say or disagree with, we're always neighbors and friends. And I'm proud of the work we've done, but I'm more proud that we've been able to, this body's remained civil, has remained a really, really good indication of our spirit in West Sacramento, cooperative, work together, and so that's probably what I'm most proud of, of being a part of that for the last nearly a decade, not quite a decade, but nearly a decade. So I just want to say thank you for that, and, and congratulations, Charlene, and David, and, and you guys are doing, doing a great job, and, you know, none of us, our work could be done without the help of the staff, the work of the staff. You guys do a terrific job, and I'll continue working with you. Just wanted to say, you know, kudos to you folks, and look forward to working with you again.
Thank you. Any other items for informal discussion? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, then?
Madam Chairman, in honor of Mr. Ledesma moving on to a higher and greater position, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight.
Move to adjourn by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Morzini. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.